Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners Public Meeting, Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. The time is 7:05. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, notice of this meeting was published in December 8th, 2022, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracca.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Minutes.
Thank you. We have a Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for August 1st, 2023, and August 15th, 2023.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
That's it for minutes, Mayor.
Communications.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two communications this evening. The first one is the Rotary Club of Nutley. They have submitted an application for a social affair permit for their beefsteak cricky tray, which will be held on Saturday, November 4th, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at 44 Park Avenue. And the VFW has submitted an application for a social affair permit for their comedy night for Saturday, November 4th, 2023, from 6:00 p.m. to 12:30 a.m. with a rain date of November 17th. And they will be at their location at 271 Washington Avenue. Any motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
Reports, Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a sheetroot report for the month of July, 2023.
Commissioner Evans.
I have a code enforcement report for the month of July.
Thank you. Bills, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. We have a bill list for September 5th, 2023. Public Affairs, eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents. Revenue and Finance, two million, eight hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifteen cents. Public Safety, eighty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Public Works, one hundred and five thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and one cent. Parks and Public Property, one million, twenty-two thousand, twenty-eight dollars and six cents. Water Utility, one hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-four cents. Payroll as of Friday, August 4th, 2023. Regular payroll total, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Overtime payroll, fifty-four thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and four cents. Total payroll, nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents, for a grand total of five million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns, share approach your microphone, provide their name for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Maybe I'd like to address the Board of Commissioners on the agenda items only. Seeing none, let's move on to Board of Commissioner announcements. It's my pleasure to announce that our town attorney, Jonathan Bruno, had a baby girl, Luciana Donatella. Congratulations to Jonathan. Congratulations to Grandpa, sitting over there. Have other announcements?
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. On this Thursday, September 7th, at 6:30 at Owens Field, we will have our annual flag football, tackle football, and cheering pep rally. It'll begin at 6:30. It'll be an abbreviated program because of the heat. We tried to reschedule, but next week is just too packed and we just couldn't get it in. The second announcement, I'll make it tonight, but I'll make it again on our next meeting. On September 24th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., we will have our Nutley Fall Festival at Memorial One, AKA the Muddle. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
First, I'd like to welcome everyone back from the summer. September is, I guess, the unofficial end of the summer. And so with sad news, we have to start this new year, but exciting about the prospects that the year holds. And on that vein, I would like to bring up Michelle O'Reilly. For the first time in over two decades, Nutley now has a health officer. This is required by statute. We have previously contracted with other municipalities to utilize their health officer. And so Michelle O'Reilly is now our official health officer for the township of Nutley. She comes with over thirteen years' experience in public health, most recently serving as the health officer for Bayonne, just across the border over into Hudson County. And with that, we have a lot of opportunity to really expand the health programs, the offerings we have in this town, and additionally get some additional grant funding. And I think in the last couple of years, with the COVID pandemic, it's just more important now than ever that we have our own health officer to really put Nutley first, to make sure that Nutley's health is really a priority, more so than it has been in the past. So I would like to welcome Michelle O'Reilly to Nutley and just show her to the community and put a face with the name, so that way people don't have to wonder, who is this new person? She's our health officer, and she's here as a resource for everyone in the town and everyone in our community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you all.
Michelle, welcome. I'm sure you're gonna do a great job.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Let's move on to ordinance introductions. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number 3528, providing for the reconstruction of roadway on Breland Avenue and utilizing five hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars worth of grant monies received from the Department of Transportation. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on October 3rd, 2023. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. Let's move on to public hearings. Commissioner Petracca.
I have ordinance number 3525, an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the Code of Township of Nutley, Chapter 228, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article 2, Parking on Certain Streets, Section 14, entitled Parking Prohibited Certain Hours to Amend the Location Set forth thereon. So this ordinance is for New Street. It's a time limited from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So I'll move to open up the public hearing.
Does anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3525? Seeing no one.
Move to close. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
Move the ordinance. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. Thank you, Commissioner. You're welcome. This is a public here on ordinance to fix the salaries of certain officers and employees of the township of Nutley County, Vest, State of New Jersey, effective January 1st, 2023. I move we open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to be heard on ordinance number 3526? Seeing none. Move to close the public hearing. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. Commissioner Evans.
Yes, this is ordinance number 3527, and this is a fully funded ordinance that we won't have to bond for this. This is for additional funding for certain capital improvements for both the township as well as the school.
Does anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3527?
Evan Franklin Avenue. I was just wondering about the money. Does that take in the work that was done at the high school, in front of the high school, the beautiful shrubs in the walkways? Is that included in this?
Mrs. Breeno, no. That was included previously. The work in the front of the high school, as well as repairs to Lincoln School, as well as Radcliffe School, were first approved over the summer. We needed additional funding to complete the sidewalks in the back of the school, so that all the sidewalks have now been, you know, improved.
Okay, but the work in front of the high school that was approved at a previous time, money for that?
Yes.
From the town. In other words, the Board of Education didn't pay for that out of its treasury. The commissioners gave that money. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to be heard on 3527? Seeing none.
Motion to close.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. We need to take a short break to go into executive session. It should not be long at all. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We need a motion?
Move it.
And a second.
Second.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, prohibits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, move into close executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Be a further resolved that a time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
Thank you, Mayor. We're back on the record. The time is now seven forty-three.
Let's move on to resolutions. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one on from this evening because we did a lot of September resolutions earlier in August. Just to offload and not inundate us at this meeting. The one I have on for this meeting is one eighty-four twenty-three, a resolution declaring September National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas prostate cancer is the second leading cause of death in American men behind only lung cancer. Whereas one in eight males in the United States will be diagnosed prostate cancer in their lifetimes. And whereas the American Cancer Society estimates that in the United States for two thousand and twenty-three about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred new cases of prostate cancer. About thirty-four thousand seven hundred deaths due to prostate cancer. Whereas aside from non-melanoma skin cancer, prostate cancer is the most common cancer among men in the United States. Is also one of the leading causes of cancer death among men of all races and including Hispanic origin populations. Prostate cancer occurs mainly in older men. About six cases in ten are diagnosed in men aged sixty-five or older. And it is rare before age forty. The average age at the time of diagnosis is about sixty-six. Whereas males in the United States with one family member diagnosed with prostate cancer have a thirty-three percent chance of being diagnosed with the disease. Males with two close family members diagnosed have an eighty-three percent chance. And males with three close family members have diagnosed have a ninety-seven percent chance. Whereas there are no noticeable symptoms of prostate cancer while in early stages making screening critical. Whereas educating people in the United States, including healthcare providers about prostate cancer and early detection strategies is crucial to saving lives of males. And preserving and protecting families. May therefore be resolved, Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey declare September. As National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, be it further resolved that we urge all men and their families in the township of Nutley to seek assistance in obtaining. The facts and information about prostate cancer and encourage residents to support. The Nutley football alumni in their effort to benefit prostate cancer research through their annual golf for a cure event on Monday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. Whereas NJSA forty-eight colon five dash four requires. The governing body of every local unit to have made an annual audit of its books, accounts and financial transactions. And whereas the annual report of the order for the year two thousand and twenty-two has been filed. By the registered municipal account with the municipal clerk pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon five dash six. And a copy has been received by each member of the governing body. Whereas local finance board. Has promulgated NJAC five thirty-six dot five. A regulation requiring that the governing body of each municipality shall by resolution certify. To the local finance board of the state of New Jersey. That all members of the governing body have reviewed as a minimum. The sections of the annual audit entitled general comments and recommendations. Whereas the members of the governing body have personally reviewed as a minimum. The annual report of the audit and specified specifically the section of the annual audit entitled general comments. And recommendations recommendations as evidenced by the group affidavit form of the governing body attached here too. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners that the Board of. That the township of Nutley hereby states that it has complied with NJAC five colon thirty-six dot five and does hereby submit. A certified copy of this resolution and the required affidavit to said board to show evidence of said compliance. And the affidavit is 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 attached to the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Whereas Vision Solar LLC submitted and paid for a solar panel permit. At seventeen Webster Street in Nutley. Whereas the cost of the permit permit fee for the solar panel was collected in the amount of six hundred and eighty-two dollars. And said amount was deposited in an account C zero-one nine oh four nine oh three. Whereas the township has received a request in writing from Vision Solar to refund. For refund of the municipal permit fee, given that they did not install the solar panels at the property. The permit fee is 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 comprised of a thirty-dollar DCA fee which cannot be refunded. A twenty percent plan fee which cannot be refunded. The remaining five hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty cents municipal permit fee. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners. Authorize the municipal permit fee to be refunded in the amount of five hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty cents to Vision Solar LLC. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Be resolved that the treasurer is hereby authorized to refund escrow monies for land use applications in the amount of three thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars for the amounts. That are listed in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli? Be resolved that the treasurer is hereby authorized to refund escrow monies for land use applications in the amount of three thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars for the amounts. That are listed in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracco?
Whereas the township of Nutley has determined that property described on Schedule A. Attached here to Incorporated hereon has been abandoned by its owners. Entitled as clear through the Division of Motor Vehicle. And whereas the town should. Whereas the towing contract between the township of Nutley. Twin Towing authorizes the sale of abandonment vehicles left on their premises by their owners. And whereas township of Nutley intends to utilize the facilities of Twin Towing Thirty-five Mill Street Belleville. For an auction on Wednesday, September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three at ten AM Schedule A. And whereas the sales are being conducted pursuant to Division Motor Vehicle NJSA thirty-nine dash ten A. Through thirty-nine ten A dash seven laws. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that township is hereby authorized to sell an abandoned personal property. Vehicles as indicated in Schedule A at a live auction. A certified copy of the resolution before to the township clerk. To the following chief of police, chief financial officers. The vehicles are two thousand and nineteen Jeep, two thousand and eighteen Toyota, two thousand and seven Toyota, two thousand and three BMW, two thousand and two Mazda, nineteen ninety-three Suzuki. And the two thousand and eighteen Honda. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Whereas the township of Nutley has determined that the property described on Schedule A and B. Attached here to Incorporated hereon has been abandoned by its owners and titles are as junk. Clear through the New Jersey Division Motor Vehicle. And whereas the towing contract between Township of Nutley and Nicoletti Towing and the Township of Nutley and Twin Towing authorizes the releases of abandoned vehicles. Left on their premises by owners, liens holders via junk title certificate. Clear through the New Jersey Motor Vehicles. Whereas the owner's lien holders have been notified of such and whereas the junk title certificates. Are being conducted pursuant to the Division of Motor Vehicle NJSA thirty-nine dash ten A through thirty-nine ten A dash seven laws. And therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the township clerk. Is hereby authorized to release the abandoned personal properties as indicated in Schedule A and Schedule B. Certified copy of the resolution before to the township clerk. To the following chief of police and chief financial officer. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Whereas on September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, a memorandum of agreement was reached between the township of Nutley and dispatchers IBW local eleven fifty-eight. Whereas township of Nutley desires to enter into a three-year contract with dispatchers IBW local eleven fifty-eight. With terms and conditions set forth in this memorandum of agreement. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the township of Nutley. Being hereby authorizes to enter into this contract with the dispatcher IBW local eleven fifty-eight. In accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the memorandum memorandum of agreement. Signed on September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three and is informed approved by council or commissioners.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, the County of Essex State of New Jersey. That the treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs. In the amounts listed below to the folks listed below. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli? Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
This next, the next several resolutions that I'm going to consolidate them. I will introduce on behalf of the entire board. And this is in reference to our Nutley Bellevle Columbus Day and Italian Heritage Parade Month Parade Committee. Whereas on Sunday, October eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Nutley Bellevle Columbus Day and Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee will celebrate its forty-first annual Columbus Day festivities. Commemorating Columbus historic voyage to the New World. And whereas the Nutley Bellevle Columbus Day Parade Committee has a long history of recognizing community members that have contributed to the rich heritage. Of the Italian-American culture and celebrate their measurable contributions to our community as well as to our nation. And whereas the Nutley Bellevle Columbus Day. And whereas the Nutley Belleville Columbus Day and Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee. Will celebrate its annual honoree dinner on Wednesday, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. At Naninas in the Park, Belleville, New Jersey. And whereas the twenty twenty-three honorees have demonstrated exemplary service to their community. And have therefore been designated for the special honors. And whereas we are justly proud to honor Maria Vincenzo Di Paolo upon receiving this year's grand marshal. Award Linda Monterosa upon receiving this year's Nutley Italian Woman of the Year Award. Daniel Carnicella upon receiving this year's Nutley Italian Man of the Year Award. Francis A Bacardi upon receiving this year's Belleville Italian Woman of the Year Award. Peter Cagiano upon receiving this year's Belleville Italian Man of the Year Award. Sharla Macaluso upon receiving this year's Renaissance Woman of the Year Award. Eric J. Lavin upon receiving this year's Renaissance Man Award. And Rene Frischa Cahill upon receiving this year's Business Leader Award. Matthew Tahala upon receiving this year's Community Excellence Award. Dennis A Genoario upon receiving this year's Italian Heritage Award. And Elisabetta Colello upon receiving this year's Lifetime Achievement Award. And whereas those who enhance the well-being and vitality of their community. And have shown a long and sustained commitment to honoring and preserving their culture. Have earned recognition of this board as well as the citizens of our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey. Join with the citizens of Nutley to salute and congratulate all the aforementioned honorees. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Whereas raffle raffle applications have been received from the following organization. Rotary Club of Nutley. License number fifty-one twenty-three on premises merchandise raffle. License number fifty-two twenty-three on premises fifty-fifty cash raffle. To be held Saturday, November fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Nutley Junior Raider Booster Club license number fifty-three twenty-three on premises. Fifty-fifty cash raffle to be held Friday, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Saint Mary's Roman Catholic Church license number fifty-four twenty-three. On premises fifty-fifty cash raffle and license number fifty feet fifty-five twenty-three on premises. Merchandise raffle to be held Friday, October thirteenth. And license number fifty-six twenty-three Bingo also to be held Friday, October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas the app. Applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk of the police department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex. State of New Jersey that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved. An municipal clerk is authorized to issue said licenses. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi. Whereas bids for NJDOT twenty twenty-three Breeden Avenue Roadway Improvement Project Franklin Avenue, Bloomfield Avenue. Were received and opened on Wednesday, August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas D and L paving contractors six seventy-five Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey was the low bidder. Whereas the base bid for the twenty twenty-three Breeden Avenue Roadway Improvement Project was in the amount of. Five hundred five thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and fourteen cents for a total bid amount of. Five hundred five thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and fourteen cents. Whereas funds are available from account number G O four one seven seven dash four oh one from monies received. Via grant from the New Jersey Department of Transportation Local Aid Municipal Grant. Have been certified by the chief financial officer. Said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey. That a contract be awarded to D and L paving contracts that is not to exceed five hundred five thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars. And fourteen cents that the mayor and township clerk. Are hereby authorized to enter into and sign say contracts for the township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name for the record. Unless further time is granted by the board. Each person should limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the board.
Yo, eighty-one East Santa Street. Mayor Scarpelli, I have a letter. Thousand and seven. Enter it into the record. Okay, it was a letter. Eighty-two Ridge Road from the Health Department. An inspection was made. On September second and third during the afternoon hours. In response to odors emanating from your property across crossing property lines. I did detect strong offensive grass odors. On the neighbor's property. Which is in violation of the Health Department nuisance code of Nutley chapter. One sixty-four, section two, comma, two. Period one, ABH. And the odors were coming from the landscaper's truck that had grass in them. The lot is to be used only to park vehicles as per the variance granted. And no time can any truck store grass or any other matter. Which may become a public health nuisance. Failure to comply will result in a summons being issued. If you have any questions, call me at the phone number. This this letter was was written by Joe Petty, the health inspector. Okay, now I'm here entering this into the record because. Nothing has been changed all of these years. In fact, it's gotten worse with the crime. With the vehicle thefts, with the odors. And I I happen to live right next door. The trucks are up against my fence. And they emanate the strong odors, mosquitoes, spiders, all of the varmints that there are exist. Now. I addressed this numerous times. And referred to Mr. Tom Evans, you know, code enforcement. And it is simply a truck terminal when, in fact. That's illegal because truck terminals are illegal. In Nutley. That's the ordinance. Okay? And the trucks are still there. It's gotten worse. The trucks got bigger. There's more. And it's it's just a a pigsty. The grass is there. It's there daily and it's not fair to somebody like, you know. Me or anyone else to have to like smell this stuff. And have it come into your yard. When you're trying to have a barbecue. It's against the law like. And and it's spilling over into the Health Department from code enforcement. Because now it has become. A health issue. I, you know. Go to the Health Department, try to bring it to their attention. I came here at the last meeting. And, you know, I I I read a a a letter into the record. Referring to the truck terminal. And there's no site plan on that particular lot. And it's just like bad. Real bad. Crime is emanating. A lot of things are happening. That are not of the norm. And it's I I feel like it's it's just my duty as a person. To come here and 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 talk at this forum about the issues that. Are occurring because it appears. That somebody must be taking a bribe. Because if there's no, if there's no truck terminals allowed in Nutley. And there's supposed to be one hour parking. And all of this and all of these ordinances that you create. That we're supposed to follow as residents and law-abiding citizens. And we get the complete opposite. No response. Come here, nothing's done about any of the anything as far as I can see about anything. Period. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for my time.
Alessio. May I see the the letter, Mayor?
Yes, yes, Mr. Kelly.
Madam Clerk?
Did somebody? Want to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna take a picture. And I'll I'll send this to our health inspectors to follow up.
Okay, that'd be a great thing. There's no argument here for me. But like I said, I did go to the Health Department. Because it's extremely, extremely terrible. And gets devastatingly bad like in August. July, August in the hotter, but it is there. Twenty-four, seven. Three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And. You know, we can get into the.
Well, when did you go to the Health Department? Was it was it another day than when you and I talked or was it a, did you go?
Well, this is go, this goes on all the time. Every day. Every day. And I tried to. Speak with Dave Barry and. Tom Evans's department because if you take it a step back. It begins with. With the not having a site plan and using the lot as a truck terminal. With everybody from Newark and all over. Numerous people breaking the ordinance. Which which I know is not your department, but wait, the way this this commissionership is like, you know, is. It's like everybody passes the buck from from one department to the next.
Well, I'll have the health inspectors go out.
I would appreciate that. Because now, like, I don't know. I don't know if anybody addressed the issue, but it goes from one truck into a little flat truck now. Trailer and they frequent the lot. During the course of the day. Bring the grass there, whatever, the construction equipment. People, workers. Day laborers come there frequent with the lot. And that's not what the the ordinance and and the variance states. It's all in black and white. I don't, I mean, I don't know how how anyone could come to a conclusion other than this is like. Somebody's being bribed.
Mr. Alessio, again, stop with the bribe stuff, please.
Well.
Sit, your time's up. Sit down. Thank you.
Mister.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alessio.
You're welcome. If you have a better word, maybe you could educate me with it, like what could be happening.
You know, I I I'm trying to sit here and bite my tongue. But I know at one of the meetings you had something to say about me and. If I if I took a bribe or something like that. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a gentleman to you tonight. Okay, and I'm gonna try to be a professional. You know, we grew up in the same neighborhood. I know you a long time. I know your family.
Yes.
And you know. Our integrity in our neighborhood meant everything to us. So unless you have proof of somebody doing some, I have too much respect for you. Okay, and your family. To to even think that you would come up here and talk about me. And I want to thank Commissioner Kelly for saying what he did or anybody else here. You should, you should really be better than that.
Can I respond to that, Mr. Mayor?
No.
I I think the commissioner, I think it's freedom of speech. He may want to hear my end of the story.
You had your five minutes.
I'll be around after the meeting, Carmel. I'll talk. I'll be glad to talk.
Well, I'd like to put it on the record. You asked me a question. I have to give you an answer.
It's up to you, Mayor.
Mr. Alessio, you had your five minutes. Please sit down.
Freedom of speech. I get it.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Maria Bosson, Highfield, two oh nine.
Speak up, Mrs. Bosson. Can't hear you.
My mic's going down a little bit. Yeah. Two oh nine Highfield Lane. I'm here because a few years ago you passed an ordinance about trees that you need a permit. To cut down a tree in your yard if it's over a certain circumference or whatever. And that's fine. You know, that was to satisfy the. The tree huggers, you know, on the other side of the coin, there were people, for example, there's a house on Tennis Place, which is around the corner. That has a tree that's got has to be a hundred or a hundred and fifty feet high. And that tree is on my property. You know, the not the tree, but the, you know, it's growing on my property. I happen to have a pool in my yard. It drops. A million acorns. You can't even sit under it. It'll knock you out. And I got permission from the people who own the house to chop down what's in my yard, which is fine. However, to do that, I have to go to the neighbor next door's yard. I had a man there to to, you know, to do such work. They wouldn't let them on the property. I don't think it's fair that we homeowners have to worry about other people's trees. If you want these trees in your yard. Take care of them. Have them trim. And this particular tree on their side of the property, it's completely gone. They they trimmed it because they have a pool. If that tree falls. My neighbor and our houses are gone. I mean, I don't think it's fair that that we have to pay. I I've paid hundreds and hundreds of dollars over the last forty-seven years. Having everybody else's trees trimmed because I happen to have a pool. I don't, I I think that they're an ordinance should be passed that that people should, if you want the tree, take care of it. I had somebody come and look at it who's a tree expert, a friend of a friend. And he said that ninety percent of these trees. Are hollow inside when they're over a certain age because the squirrels get in them, the termites. And if a big wind, that tree's, my my house is gone. So I think it would be fair that you pass an ordinance that people who want trees, take care of them. Why should I have to argue with my neighbor next door because they won't let me on their property to trim that tree?
True. Well, Mrs. Bosson, number one, that that ordinance was passed, all right, not to appease the tree huggers, as you call them.
I can't hear you.
I said that ordinance was passed many years ago not to appease. The tree huggers, as you're calling them. It was to maintain the character of the township and to maintain. The urban forest that we have here. All right? And let me finish. Let me finish. I listened to everything you said. All right? And the law states that anything that's over your property, you have a right to trim back, all right, from your property.
Yeah, but how do I get up to the, how do I get to?
Well, someone would have to come onto your property to get to the branches and and I can sympathize with you. With having a pool and having a tree with stuff falling.
Understand, I mean.
I have, I have the same issue in my yard. Okay, and I pay just like you do to have the tree trimmed, all right? But that that's the law, all right? Anything on your property, you're welcome to cut back.
Proper way to trim.
To say that many of these trees have been here before the homes were built.
I understand that, but after a while, you know, a tree becomes a danger.
But the tree's a danger. If you suspect that there's a tree that's dangerous. We have a certified tree arborist on staff. He'll be happy to come out. He'll he'll take core samples. He'll check the tree.
How do I, how do I?
The fact that someone told you that ninety percent of these trees of that age are hollow on the since that.
I don't know. I'm just telling you what I was told.
Yeah, no, I I I understand what you're saying, but I'm just, I'm just. Trying to clarify, you know, what what I believe is true. And if there is. A tree that looks like it's distressed or it could be dangerous, all right, to either someone or someone's property. Then by all means, we take action and we have taken action.
Fair?
Notify the homeowner, all right, to do what's right and to correct and eliminate that dangerous situation.
You'll see that it's impossible for me to trim that tree. Unless I can go on the neighbor next door and she's a little nutty. She won't let me go, you know, she won't let them go on her property, which is her right. You know, but what 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 am I?
You know what? Let me, let me do this, Mrs. Bosson. Let me, let me research that a little bit with our legal department. Mr. Bruno, as the mayor earlier said, just had a a beautiful baby girl, so he's with his wife where he should be. But as soon as he's he's back from taking care of his family, I'll check with him and see if there's something that we can do. It doesn't, it's not reasonable for your neighbor not to let you on their property. So you can trim their tree that's growing over on your property. I don't disagree with that.
Tree. It's the tree of the the neighbor next door is on Highfield Lane. This is the tree of the people on Tennis Place. And she gave me, she said, whatever's on your property, cut it.
Right.
Which was fine, but.
Well, I'll 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 research it and I'll I'll get back to you.
Don't you think that in general people should, if you want trees, you should maintain them, that it should not be the neighbor's responsibility to? But don't you think that in general people should, if you want trees, you should maintain them, that it should not be the neighbor's responsibility to maintain?
Yeah, they should, but if the tree's growing over on your property, then it becomes your issue. Okay, that's just that's just the way it is, not only in Nutley, but everywhere in the United States.
Oh, my God.
Thank you, Mrs. Bosson. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Joan Rubino, one twenty-seven Franklin Ave. Um, I recently had some damage by vandals to my property. And I just want to say the police were really very attentive. They kept me in the loop with everything they were doing and I just wanted to commend the Police Department. Uh, also, I had a um, I recently moved and I had a problem with the bulk uh, garbage or whatever from all the years that we lived in the house. We're getting rid of a lot at one time. And I called the um, Department of Public Affairs and Sharon Bosser was at my house within ten minutes. And she resolved the issue immediately and I am very appreciative of that because it was really a uh, going to be a problem for me because I was moving uh, a lot sooner than I had thought I would be. So I didn't have time to kind of budget my stuff at the curve. Uh, also, I was wondering if any progress has been made with the flooding situation. I know you've taken measures, uh, preventive measures with water, et cetera, but has anything been done from the source? Because of the, you know, what I'm talking about, the the great tsunami we had a few years ago.
Mother Nature, do you mean, Mrs. Bosser? I don't know if I could control that, but.
No, but they they they, you said they were going to be looking into ways to uh, fix or address that situation. Has anything anything?
We we have a report that's still in the draft. Uh, it should be out shortly. And there are some ideas within that report of things that can be done. Some of them require DEP uh, approval to get done, but uh, and we've made some improvements along the way. We found, you know, some some areas that uh, there was a hubcap stuck perfectly in a sewer line that just clogged it up perfectly and we would have never found out without doing the inspections that we did over the last twelve months, so.
Very good. All right.
That will be forthcoming.
I'll keep coming. Uh, also, um, have you any information about the uh, twelve dollar fee that the public service is going to charge people who have the analog meters?
We've not not received a response back from the Department of.
Yeah, because uh, I think that really should be, or you should make an effort to have that rescinded. Uh,
We did look, we did write a letter to them, but I I don't think we received the response date.
That's unusual is or is it?
I can't answer that.
Thanks.
Mrs. Rubino, Mayor, if I make this comment on one thing, I'd just like to say thank you for commending the Police Department because as you know, the police officers have a very, very hard job today with the new bail reform, how a lot of people, you know, there's no control over that, you know, we have kids and it gives me a good segue into please, if anybody's listening out there or in here, lock your car doors at night. We are putting on special units at night to, you know, um, surveillance the town because what the issue is now with the new laws with this new bail reform, which I am a hundred percent against, is that the these people that come from other towns and they shake these door handles, they're out of, you know, our police station in a half hour. So please, if you're listening, lock your doors because it it's all over. I don't know if you noticed, we have been putting police officers on Franklin Avenue. Thanks to the Board of Commissioners for funding us in the public safety and I really do appreciate it because we do want a police presence out there. I also, it gives me an opportunity to thank um, Mark Delita that's here tonight in court. He's one of the guys standing on those corners. And I know it's not so easy at his age, but the township appreciates it greatly. Police presence is needed. Towns are changing all over. We want to keep Nutley what it is and that's why we're working hard in public safety and the Board of Commissioners.
I I appreciate that they made every effort. They didn't ca- catch the kids, but they did try really hard.
We'll keep trying. Thank you, Mr. Rubino. And and Mayor, I'd also like to thank Mrs. Rubino for uh, for extending her appreciation to to Ms. Ms. Bosser. Uh, everyone at the the Health Department fields calls her late to garbage day in and day out. Uh, and uh, it it's good to it's, they like to know that their their work is appreciated and so I'll definitely pass the that information along to that them so they know uh, that she knows that she's she did a great job for you. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing no one, uh, that concludes the business portion of our meeting, we need to go into executive session to discuss.
Potential litigation and contract negotiations.
Have a motion. Move it.
Second.
Whereas sectionated the Open Public Meeting Act, chapter two thirty-one Public Law nineteen seventy-five permits the exclusion of public for meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley movement to close executive session to discuss potential litigation and contract negotiations. Be a further resolved at the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley and or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye, as there be no further business, I have a motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And the time is eight twenty-one.